Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
DJ Sigler Esquire.
Yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, that is very happy. You're staying on a matter of some or then see from my office. Just stepped out of the call if you go. I'm pretty excited about that. It makes my life easier. I'm sure I played it harder, but it makes my life easier. What that has done is created a vacancy. Approximately two years ago, I came before his body and asked for some funding for a deputy prosecutor position. For the trial, I felt he explained the counts of that kind of that was consistent with what we were seeing. Those post-COVID counts and crime that he saw that everybody saw. And also with one other county that's in his side. And you were gracious enough to provide us funding for that position at the time. What I had said was the impetus that drove that was I had a very knowledgeable prosecutor coming out of law school. And I wanted to capture her right away. And we had to bring on that position at approximately sixty-three, sixty-five thousand dollars. That was really appreciated and it worked out extremely well. What we found, however, as we got through the process, we saw first of all what she was capable of. And what the need was, we discovered, as I said to you when I asked for the money for the position. This is a baseline minimum kind of. Outback in the team where you were seeking somebody, for example, with three to five years of experience. There's absolutely no way we could obtain or ask for a lawyer at that level. One of the things, one of the disturbing things that everybody else didn't know before I did, which I guess happened from this box over there, is that her salary on the prior salary, the salary that Deputy Spah actually was equivalent to starting police salary. Road office salary. It was very difficult for us, for her in particular, to have any kind of. Plus, you couple the fact that we're asking folks to spend a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to obtain a law degree. And then starting them at a pension position with two of those. And road office. That's the reason I just simply said, with the amount of investments offered the law degree. Some were different in terms of salary, they were still in their pay. The rest of the practice. So with that in mind and all of that, I did a team. God classification analysis with.
Sure.
So what that basically shows is the three classifications of a lawyer. That we has found a range for each. And the existing salary is not even within range. Described by this. So you'll see that the level one, which would be the entry level deputy prosecutor, the external salary range of seventeen seventy-two and two thousand. This one is currently, mine is currently sixty-three oh three six. Mid point for an entry level deputy prosecutor, eighty thousand dollars, eighty, eighty thousand. So just based upon the dot here. I identified through the process of entry level for that slot. We got an extreme, I would characterize it with an extreme level of experience, subdivision experience. And a lot of trial experience, which is kind of what I demand. So with all that being said, the midpoint is identified again at eight thousand two hundred five. Is funding on that deputy prosecutor slot, not the lead slot, simply seventy-five thousand dollars. One of the, one of the things with the hiring of Jennifer, Chief Deputy Prosecutor. Is that she's now a state base. So she now has experience of cost saving. That position, so there is the least, that's two thousand twenty-two and two thousand times two thousand twenty-three. There is unspent money for this year. That is the basic premise. And each year, we continue to see slight increases, essentially on major, consistent national increases. Both in crime, drug activity, US thirty, always like that. Nice river between Chicago and Wayne. A little bit extra. And so I'll give down that.
A little bit deeper on what exactly extreme level of experience means?
Sure. So the person that I've identified is older than I am. Been practicing for a long time. So somebody without twenty years of legal experience as a lawyer, as a litigator. That's what I would characterize.
So because of the, the timing at the end of the year, essentially today you were asking for us to agree to that salary. So that you can post the position. And we can't actually take action on it formally until January.
I, my understanding that I think that position isn't necessarily required. I thought it was an intent position. I could be wrong about that.
Okay. She says you're correct. Jennifer does.
That's a very nice switch. I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's an intent position, so we, we have to bail off that. We would have somebody bail off relatively quickly, close to the end of this year. Bail off and start at the beginning first.
Tamara. We can't amend the salary ordinance till the first of the year, right?
I mean, it would just have to be on the twenty twenty-three budget, so they wouldn't be able to be higher than it's all. Twenty twenty-three budget.
We assume it's not that way.
So you can improve it, but it just wouldn't be able to be higher than it's all.
Sure. Further discussion or questions?
Any possibility of having some additional control money for this salary?
Sure, there's always a possibility. I mean, theoretically possible problem with that salesman's control again. Is that those funds are transferred. Funds about to make the town and sort of really difficult to maintain a lot of security for employees. They are funded by the county. It also impacts the benefits analysis ultimately for the county. So we have that. So I think that would be a real issue for anybody that's paying attention to how they're paid.
Is that fund getting pretty low?
Well, I did go to Mexico a couple of weeks ago, so yeah. No, it's not. The fund is fine. The fund is fine. But I try to take care of my.
What is, what is the allocation we have for the twenty twenty-three budget for that position?
Uh, I expect it to never get sixty-three thousand, zero two six.
And this did not go through the personnel committee?
No.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we, we had a meeting, but he was unavailable and we had no paperwork or anything, so we made no decision.
It reached out, reached out to the individual, but yet that's correct.
And there's no other money from the state anywhere to help fund that position?
No, that's a great question. So the, the only. State provides very little funding to the rate of deputy prosecutor salaries. Unless you're in a county of a sufficient size, for example, Allen, Vanderburg, Lake. Or you have a fractional facility in your county or community county that requires additional lawyer. So now there's areas. I mean, we're always on the lookout for grant funding. For a garden variety deputy prosecutor, you can't miss any of those trials, that kind of thing.
You know, my only question was when you had made your phone call was if this is a needed position or a wanted position. And did you have two prosecuting attorneys before?
So another great question. So when I first came here to ask for deputy prosecutor slot, it's not a one. At least in my estimation, I suppose somebody. I'd love to have that conversation. What, what we found over the course of the year is the potential more. Got enormous transient problem. Used to be the law enforcement officer that I don't trust, described two years ago. If you had a burglary on five times, you knew where the no count was going out. Round, sort of an outside end. Now you're talking about traffic on the security device. You're rising to something coming up ice. So then with COVID in the mix, which we had a nice downturn during that time. But we also knew that created a lack of inventory that we were coming out of that inventory. It was three. Plus you see enough sick, drug activity, you didn't see enough years, enough sick and domestic violence. So all of these things taken together. So we've, we've become a lot more adept at complex litigation. Complex cases. I handle a lot of, a lot of major challenges, like tortious, complicated child sexual assault case, rape case, complex drug case. So that, that takes a lot of the prosecutors, not that it didn't before, but we have, I did know about that. I think that is, that's, that's the reason we identified for that.
So there wasn't, that position wasn't in place prior?
It wasn't in place prior to twenty twenty-four.
I think that was true. When I come up here, where the sheriff's department, your board after we announced the subject. That was the reference with prosecutor and UVA was. When I moved in in my position, I think we've been around thirteen hundred days. Our people have more than doubled in about eight years. Over the last eight years, their people have more than. I would attribute some of that as well to when I came on, a lot of the city guys were retiring. So they were rebuilding their whole entire workforce. And that, between then and now, they've replaced almost all of their officers. Now I feel like they've lost them too recently and they're gonna have to rebuild some of those again. But they've also added, so the county, I believe y'all have added some extra positions to the sheriff's department. That increases some of our workload as well. More people on the road, more cases for us. As long as we get done, we have to take extra time to do those five. So I think that adds up. Because I remember doing the six hundred and fifty and I was able to easily maintain that as a workload for me. And then that goes in through all the way up. We were almost done with that.
We have fond memories of Friday afternoons in prosecutor's office where we could all sit around and. And a true person coming in, the attorney's coming in, the city opposition. And then we'd all kind of have these informal meetings, talk about the case. Those days disappeared long ago. We're all, we're all. Everybody threw down. Otherwise, but our, our small quarter will change, change. I think police needs to prove. The factors going to that analysis, preferred more than we did answer to your same question.
So just to clarify, this is an existing position?
Yes, sir.
And what the market will bear is seventy-five thousand dollars and not sixty-three?
I think that's, I think that's fair.
What do we need to do to accomplish this to the salary?
I think that we approve it today and then in January, we would have the documentation, the addition to the salary ordinance. So we can't actually do the salary ordinance today, hasn't been advertised.
I think it should be run through WISs like, like any other position through the personnel committee.
Would you be open to our human resources person checking the salary book of all officials elected and appointed? And seeing if it's in range?
Not the personnel committee generally done, I mean, the process. Whatever the process is.
If it's, if it's a position already in place, we don't ask for it to go, if there's no changes. We don't ask for it to go before WISs. If it's a new position or if there is a change to that position, we always say we would prefer it to go through. Normally, don't we?
Yeah.
Wasn't this a change? Wasn't this a significant change?
Salary, but not the position.
Position's not, it's just, this is an update from WISs, correct?
Correct. So that is, that is the work that you're essentially asking to be done is, is in that document there.
I'm sorry, I thought DJ said he created this.
No, he had WISs.
This is from, directly from WISs in their recent salary announcement.
So actually it's been done, yes.
Yeah, it's not a specific request from Whitley County to them for the position. It's their.
We requested as a whole for all of our.
Right.
And this was directly related to deputy prosecutor.
So I can say, I couldn't generate anything that was this.
I guess my feeling is, I think we all understand your caseloads and how they've increased. I, I feel. DJ, your, your points about getting the right persons, it takes the right dollars to do that and experience. You know, I, I concur that sixty-three thousand is not enough money. That, that position will stay vacant and understand why. So I can throw my support toward this.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion that we allow the position to be funded for seventy-five thousand.
Have a motion in a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. And let it be noted in the past unanimously. Thank you. Dale.
Good morning. Dealt with economic corporation along with a special guest here. What we are asking for today is on your advanced materials. One of our largest employers that work in the county, four hundred employees, over twenty million dollars in annual salary. Quite a bit of tax basis to the county. MicroPulse is considering a pretty large expansion. The next couple of years around eighty-five to ninety-one employees at work. What they are, what we are asking here today is consider it a city, consider it activated investment. And I'd like to introduce Christopher Carmine with, who represents MicroPulse. He's actually CFO of the parent company. I'll let him just kind of talk a little bit about what's going on at MicroPulse and opportunities in the future.
Good morning, Christopher Carmine, you know, as the CFO of Calo Ranchers, which is the family office for a lot of employees. I also say this to be able to not affect the staff. The business is private and the contract is specific to you or computer. So Microsoft knows early, they're looking to, I want to do it. And the business has grown significantly. The order book has more than doubled over the last twelve months. And the value is really increasing. Below your demand for rises. It was coming from existing customers as well as new customers. And the variety of product line is. Which is around the customer, which is more and more. And so, you know, the result, you have them continually. Although this growth, you know, it's going to continue to grow over the next four to five years. So we believe that that's what we're hoping to achieve. And one of the options is to. To see that the, the particular pieces of the, of the. This, this is ten, it's already, last year, I thought it was seventy thousand. It's a lot of sixty thousand. With all these things, you'll be more production. And you do very much more. I would say more of the same, we're both a little highly specialized. Insurance, a kind of specialized steel bed, different foundation requiring skill labor. There would be some other, a blend of different languages. By most part, highly skilled labor. There is some degree of automation that seems to be in this option as well. There we go, slowly, we be careful. You can see we've got a healthy beginning season.
But just one clarification. You said eighty to ninety jobs and in the cost benefit summary, it says a hundred and. Two years.
And it's the cost benefit summary showed that the payment is still over two million dollars. Tax benefit for the town. So today we're, we have a part new resolution in twenty twenty-two, twenty fifteen. Asking for a ten-year base.
Questions?
I've got comments. Certainly it's been interesting watching MicroPulse grow over the years. I think Brian started in a garage. And as that grew and he's been innovative himself, I mean. Ran his own sewer line out, so he had sewer for the business. The facility is well-kept, attractive, the road, constant employer. Of course, you have to keep up too with the updates of the equipment and that. And that, my feeling is if MicroPulse expands, we certainly would like you to continue to expand in Whitley County. So, so I'm in support of tax payment.
Thank you.
Ten hundred and fifty percent.
Fifteen. Twenty, twenty-two, fifteen.
Is that a motion? I'll make that a motion that we approve the tax payment.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Further discussion? I lend my support as well because Microsoft is an excellent corporate and community member. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. And let it show to the past unanimously.
Thank you.
You mean MicroPulse?
MicroPulse. What did I say? Microsource?
Microsource.
MicroPulse. Solid Waste Interlocal Agreement. Is there anyone here to speak to this?
I can speak to it. I'm a member of the Solid Waste Board. The only change in this interlocal is we increased rent from five hundred to seven fifty. So it's a two hundred and fifty dollar increase per month. And that should be the only change in the entire.
My only question is, are you going to increase it again next year?
It's not anticipated that there will be an increase next year. But during this period of time that, that Solid Waste has rented from the county, there's never been an increase. So.
Still well below market value.
Yeah. We just feel it's completely reasonable for a two fifty increase.
Yeah, and it, it's so low, below market value that it needs to be addressed periodically.
I agree. I think it needs to be looked at every year. The way prices went up. The cost of electricity.
And make a motion that we let Tim sign the approval for the two hundred and fifty dollar increase.
And the entire document.
Entire document.
Motion in a second. Further discussion?
I, I do a little bit. And I understand the low rent has been there a long time. They're setting with a pretty good cash balance on just in that.
We met yesterday and, I mean, the bleak reality is that our rates may have to go up. I don't know how soon, but we're responsible for the containers. And a lot of the containers are, their, their lifecycle, they've exceeded their lifecycle or their, I can see. They're, they're breaking at a quick rate right now. The wheels are breaking off, the lids are snapping, the, the sides are being crushed. And, I mean, we're faced with some, with some expenses that are unplanned. And so I would argue that it's not an excessive cash balance and that those funds are going to be needed soon.
The, the only thing I was thinking is I think we're doing major remodeling to the restrooms there.
Yeah, and which was the purpose of the increase on the rent.
But I wondered if, if Solid Waste could give just a little more towards the restrooms. I mean, I know that's not, not a leasehold. Normally the people renting it pays for that, but I didn't know if they could.
Yeah, no.
Assist with the little, little money.
Yeah, so we own the building, we're responsible for that sort of thing. So that was discussed at a Solid Waste Board meeting and the reality is no. The Solid Waste Board shouldn't be paying for the restrooms, but it is reasonable to pay more in rent to offset that cost.
What, what is your balance, do you know?
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval of the renewed interlocal agreement? All in favor of approval of the renewed interlocal agreement with the rent increase? Raise your right hand. And let it show that it was unanimous. Mark Sturdivant.
I'm here this morning. Three things here. The first thing was we had somebody do some property damage in a government center parking lot. Where they done some damage to the, one of the light poles. My understanding that the insurance company has sent the check to the county, I believe it went to County General. What I'm asking for is that that money be put back into my account. So I can pay to have that. Was that amount, Mark? The amount is.
We've got the check right here with us.
Six thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars, sixteen cents.
Make a motion that we put back into Mark's account.
Is that check from the person that hit the pole? Are we covering that? Is the county responsible?
The vehicle operator's insurance has issued a check.
Okay, and it indicates clearly who it's from. State Farm for the person who got hit the accident. Yeah, you've got a copy of the invoice. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of the motion to transfer these funds? Raise your right hand. All in, let it show that it was unanimous.
The second item. I'm requesting a transfer resolution. An amount of five thousand dollars. From the account three six zero zero four. In the part-time payroll, account one one seven zero zero. This is covered the additional part-time and overtime that was incurred this year. In twenty twenty-two, the, any overtime that was paid was paid out of part-time payroll. There was no. I didn't have a overtime budget line item. In the past, it's always been paid out of the part-time. Since then, we've switched that for the twenty twenty-three.
That's the last page in your packet for Mark. So this is a simple transfer within the maintenance department? Do I have a motion to approve the transfer?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. And let it show that it was unanimous.
On the last item I have is an additional appropriation request for two thousand dollars. Again, to put in the line item of part-time payroll. Account one one seven zero zero. To get this, to carry us through the remaining payroll of the year. I believe there's three more payroll left in here.
This is not, this last one is not a transfer, you need more money, is that right, Mark?
That is correct.
You don't have anything left in any other line item, anywhere to transfer for the end of the year?
I don't believe so. We're going to need what I've got in there. We've incurred quite a bit of cost this year in overtime with the jail, having to go back in retrieve blankets, clothing items out of the sewer lines. That ate up quite a bit of part-time overtime. There were a few other things that come up there. What's incurred overtime?
Do I have a motion concerning this additional appropriation?
You just have to take that out of County General?
How much money's left in council's budget? Can we take anything left out of our usually budget and cover that?
Your budget? Now that your budget basically just covers your wages.
I thought there was some travel money and other things in there. Yeah, well, that's even better. Is there any money in the commissioner's budget that we can take?
I don't think so. We need to do some transferring things themselves, so.
I make a motion, we request the two thousand out of County General. I mean, it's out of Mark's hands. He can't help what happens in that jail at night. They call him in, I mean, I don't want to, but we've got to, they got to get in there and get it fixed, no matter what time of the day it is, so.
So you have a motion to approve the additional?
Yeah.
Two thousand dollars.
That's less than.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. And let it show that it was unanimous. We'll deny the commissioners their money later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
I see that I skipped Pamela on behalf of the Auditor's Office.
Tiffany and I are going through over extended accounts, and we noticed that we have a reimbursement fund. And a receipt was put basically in County General, I mentioned that's in County General back in twenty eighteen. So we have a negative balance in that account, or in that fund, so we're just trying to clean that up. But it'll be the transfer from County General to that eighty-six sixteen to make that right.
And the supporting documents are just the following pages.
So it's ran in the minus since two thousand eighteen?
Some funds are ways and then are often in the negative, that's just how they run, whether they are not appropriated or the reimbursement grants. And some reimbursement grants, we don't get reimbursed until the next year, or sometimes the year after. So taking a negative balance in a fund like this, a grant fund, is uncommon. So Tiffany and I were just going through all the grants, and we noticed this one we don't really use anymore. So we kind of thought that was weird. We got with Amy Biggs, and I, I just went back and did research on the amount that was negative. Happened to be the exact amount of a reimbursement received, we figured out what it was for. And that it was just put in County General instead of the correct one.
So after we balance the account, can we close out that account number since we don't use it anymore and put it back in general fund?
No, so that's just making a zero balance. And I believe this is one that we will continue to use. So what we do if we don't, we have a fund that we don't use in a while, we contact who's ever in charge of that fund. We do it all the time, and say, hey, is this something that you're going to be using in the future? And they say yes, like we hope to, or no, and if we don't think we're going to use it anymore, then we will close it out. But if we're going to continue to try to get money for that, or whatever the case is, this is one that we will continue.
So that does bring it to a zero balance?
Right.
And what fund is it going into?
Eighty-six sixteen, you should have a transfer right here.
What fund is that?
This is a, yeah, it's a, it's a EMA. It is the State Homeland Security Grant.
She could have used that money.
We knew.
I know, when we were looking, we were hoping to find stuff to go in the County General, we'll take away, but what's right is right, and this is right, so.
Do I have a motion to approve the transfer of six thousand ninety-six dollars, sixty-six cents that was reimbursed incorrectly to County General as opposed to this EMA fund? Do I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. And let it show that it was unanimous. Brad Allen.
Good morning. I come to you with a few things. Here, the first one is a simple funds transfer within funds in the engineering department for the installation of safety lights on the drainage supervisor's truck. That amount was one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. And we are requesting a transfer from unused drainage supervisor salary funding. And then just move it to the equipment.
Any questions?
Don't move.
We have a motion and a second to approve this transfer of seventeen hundred and twenty dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. And let it show that it was unanimous.
The second item is a couple of equipment purchases. First piece of equipment would be a replacement for a piece of equipment we already have. And that would be the GPS rover. This piece of equipment is used to accurately locate anything really for upload into our GIS. We primarily use it for tile drains, and provide the info to contractors prior to when they need to replace the drain. We also would use it to accurately record the location of the tile. Currently, our drains are in our GIS based on approximations. And this would allow us to accurately locate them prior to replacing them. Our current GPS rover, the liability is declining. It takes long time to get a signal. Or if at all, it requires a Wi-Fi hotspot in order to connect to the network. And it doesn't support newer hotspots. And so we received a new one from Verizon, and it couldn't even connect. So this, this piece of equipment, we received three quotes from our vendor. And basically, they range from about twenty-eight thousand dollars to forty-two thousand dollars. The three levels, the main difference is durability, the cheapest one being made out of plastic and highly susceptible to breaking if dropped on a hard surface. And then the most expensive one basically has bonus features. And so out of the three, recommendation would be for the middle grade. Now, if we don't get this piece of equipment, we would, we would essentially have to do two contracts per tile replacement. The first one would be for somebody to locate the tile so that the contractors who are going to replace it could do an accurate bid. We had an instance this past year where, you know, our, our locator was down, and we gave the contractor the best information we had. The tile ended up being over twenty-two feet deep instead of nine feet deep. And required the contractor to do much more work in order to replace that. So we want to prevent further occurrences of this. So that is the first piece.
My first question is the one with the extra bells and whistles. Are those items that you would anticipate using over the life of this piece of equipment adding to your process?
Probably something we would use, but not necessarily need it for.
And what's the anticipated life of this piece of equipment?
I don't hold that off on my head. I do know that this includes a five-year full replacement warranty, all these prices do. And I don't remember when this last used for this, but I think it's that.
Clearly over five years.
I would just add that the commissioners met during our November twenty-first meeting and discussed and would offer a favorable pass.
Chad, you got any money left in CDA?
Well, we're later on your agenda, asking for additional appropriation on CDA. But we'll explain that a little more when we get there.
Do you propose a budget line for this to come out of?
I do not, I, I'll be honest, I'm not familiar with all the budget. I don't know one. I've also asked a couple of people about grants, but I have not heard back on if there's even a grant out there for something like this.
It's too bad that drainies can't put some money in towards this, but I know that they're pretty strict on what they can use that money for, so.
And there are additional applications that the engineers' office would use this equipment for, not just drains?
Anything the county needs to pick up and put into GIS, including road signs, intersections, culverts, anything like that, we could use this equipment for.
Katie, does the highway department have the equipment to do this? But the department does not have its own? Well, you guys want to comment to it? Procedurally, we're going to have to find a budget line to take it from. And if it's not there, we'll need an additional appropriation from general fund to go forward if it's not anywhere in a line item.
Just to elaborate on, on the other question, I think the commissioners will be more than willing to cover this from CDA, and the funds are there, they're just not appropriated. And it's not included on our appropriation for today. I think it's a reasonable expense to use CDA for.
Is there any expenses that will be attached to this after this is implemented? Is there any further needed supplement?
There's the second piece of equipment that I haven't got to yet, which would be a bit additional. So they are, they are separate. And that one is, it's a tile locator. It's essentially a long wire that you can shove through a pipe. Once you have access to that pipe, whether that's through a outlet or some sort of washout, or you have to dig down to. But once you have this, you can shove up to six hundred feet through it, and then you can accurately locate it both horizontally. It tells you when you're standing right above it, and tells you that. And then, and then we would use the GPS rover to mark the location.
And that's the duck, duck hunter piece? Which is this? Did you include that in with your money for everything then, Chad?
Thank you. Roughly, it's, we, commissioners give us favorable, if we go without them, we disagree.
And there's a third piece of equipment, since we're going to have to fund it all separately, or together probably. And there's a third piece of equipment, since we're going to have to fund it all separately, or together probably, why don't you describe the third piece of equipment that's on the list?
The, so the, the duck hunter and the lawn thing are included both in that seven thousand dollars, they're, they go together, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, so, basically, we can't use one without the other in that.
So the laser system with its own hotspot.
So these two go together?
They do, and they're both included in that seven thousand dollars.
Seven, thank you.
Without a one or another.
So essentially, the request is for approximately forty-six thousand dollars worth of equipment. Commissioner, you want to speak to that, but, but it's not in your current request?
That's right, yeah, so, sorry. I mean, I, I think the commissioners would be more than willing, of course, I'm only one of three, and I would get to take that back for a vote, but I think it would be reasonable to purchase this through CEDA. And the funds are there, it's not like they're not, they're just not appropriated.
It is too late to do an additional for twenty-twenty-two, so I read the schedule, so we can help, that you have the recall for twenty-three, the first of that.
Unless there's somewhere else that the council would like to purchase this from.
I'd like to see it come out of CEDA.
What's the order time on this? Because we've probably been looking at twenty-twenty-three anyway.
I don't, I think the GPS rover, I think they have these in stock and can deliver them, and then, I'm not sure on the.
But if everything has to work together, there's no reason to get one now and one later. I mean, they all have to work together.
The GPS, the GPS system or the locator, we could use without the other piece. Because the tile locator, if we had both pieces of that, we could, you know, put a stake in instead of just locating it right away.
Brad, can you find out how long they'll honor that price? If they could wait till two thousand twenty-three?
Yeah, because we all know it's only going to go up.
Yeah, and if there is an increase, let us know.
I know the fire department, some things that you notify vendor, that you will need to build, through budgeting, they can still issue a order for it, but it's honored at those five. Three hundred and twenty-three, so please try and purchase one of the rest that would be here in two.
Well, I was just going to say, that's fine, but keep in mind, if commissioners don't agree to CEDA, then we're going to have to come up with another way to fund it. And the only way I know to fund it's either rainy day or take it out of general fund.
They've already given their favorable pass.
Yeah, we just didn't have the money to just purchase.
But they didn't know where they were going to prove it, come out of.
So is everyone comfortable with CEDA once the funds are allocated?
How long would it take before we found out, if we pass this using CEDA funds, when will we know if commissioners backed that decision?
I mean, we could put it on in our next meeting in two weeks, I guess.
Could be made with that.
Technically passed with approval of CEDA funds, because they have to approve that, so we could send that to commissioners, but to send it back to us, but we really think passing it was getting ahead of ourselves.
I think, I think we need to do whatever so he can get it ordered. Normally, the winter time is time when they work drains, they get ready for bids, so the work can be done in summer. So I think, I was at a meeting, Chad, you guys were all for this, so I, you know, I know assumptions can get you in trouble, but I, I think we need to proceed on that. We're going to get, if needed, no matter what, so.
Do you have the interest in a straw boat saying that we're in favor principally paid out of CEDA?
Yes.
Okay, so.
But to do that, it doesn't push him, doesn't do anything for this, though. We're just doing the draw votes.
Basically says, we will find a way to pay for it, we're planning on it being seeded, because we believe it needs to be purchased.
We'll get it out of one fund or another.
If CEDA doesn't work out, but I'm sure, I'm sure the commissioners are going to give it the favorable pass, both of them. And I, I think you can go ahead, whatever procedure, we need to order it, so we can get, get it at that cost, hopefully, instead of a price increase.
Yeah, well, Councilman Hodges is correct, there's no formal action we can take at this point. That we should, yes, procedurally.
And this is on emergency, it's the piece of equipment you need. And just because they bring, just because things are brought to us in December and says, we got to have it, doesn't mean that we don't have two months to get this figured out.
Well, this has been in the works for two or three months, and this is critical time that they, they get the bids out on those, those district areas.
So we're trusting a decision can be made next commissioner meeting, and then in January, we would actually fund it.
I'd like to say something, your presentation on this was terrific, I want to thank you for putting all that into it, this is how a presentation should be made. Thank you.
It's just missing a page that someone from your office could create with their proposed place, fund to take it from.
Yes.
And procedurally, you'll get that, Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, sometimes definitely get that, yeah. Confer inside where we're going to pay for it.
He's got someplace in his budget. And I see that I skipped him again, we have the longevity pay date letter, and our early decision to pay longevity next year, that we found reasons to change that to paying it this year?
Tiffany kind of hurt the concerns, longevity, she contacted her, contacted Lao, payroll, and basically kind of hashed out like what could be done to kind of appease everyone. So the new date is December twenty-ninth, this allows payroll to only change wages once, though, so that's free for them. And allows it to be in the twenty-twenty-two year, so it's on the W two, so it's free for the retirement, just kind of the fix-all, so you have that in front of you?
Need a motion? Yes. Take a motion that they pay longevity pay December the twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
I would just like to make sure that we recognize Deputy Health Breaker's bringing this forward, it would be an issue for some employees, because sometimes those things get looked over, so. It's, I think, a perfect example of speaking up and giving thanks, thanks, Tony, appreciate that.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, and let it show that it was unanimous. Anyone here to speak to the transfer request from the museum? It's a transfer from Personnel Services, Curator to Supplies and Preservation. Do I have a motion regarding this transfer?
Take motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made, do we have a second? Any further discussion? In favor of the motion, raise your right hand, please, and let it show that it was unanimous. You're in transfers and additional appropriations, we have a series of them. The first is from Building and Planning, requesting an additional appropriation of a thousand dollars for capital outlays from their refunds and reimbursements, do I have a motion? This would be first in your pack.
I have a motion to accept the transfer.
Have a motion to approve the transfer, a second, please?
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor of the transfer in Building and Planning, raise, additional, I'm sorry. Raise your right hand. Next item is the Health Department. It's got, got left. Clinic miscellaneous expenses. It's an additional appropriation for five hundred dollars. A motion and a second, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Let's make it show it was unanimous. Probation Department, supplemental adult on twenty thousand dollars. Go ahead and just introduce yourself for the recording.
Hello, everyone, I, I don't believe you've all met, my name is Andrew Beaver, new chief probation officer, serving in the Division for. So I'm requesting a twenty thousand dollar additional appropriation, this would be from our supplemental account fund, our expenditures have gone over. And so, I'm just requesting the appropriations to cover the over, this would be from that same account, but not from the county. There's been some expenses that vehicle maintenance repairs, so on and so forth, that were on account or in the budget, therefore, the cost for the appropriation.
Motion approved.
Motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
From County General, Commissioners. Dr. Banks. Says County General, EMS, that's one we have.
Yeah, so I think everybody's familiar with this one, too, the EMS contract with Parkview, historically, a portion of that was paid from a, from a, an account at the community foundation, but they're unable to support it or, or to make any additional payments, because it's not generating, the, the trust is not generating, not generating enough money.
So as we move forward, what do we do?
Realistically, as we move forward, the county's probably going to be on the hook to pay the whole thing. So there's, there's an account, it's a community foundation, that was created when Parkview purchased the old Whitley Memorial Hospital, and there was disputed money that was just put into a trust, and it was decided between the county and Parkview, those funds would be used for public health in Whitley County. Because they couldn't decide if it was county money, or if it was Parkview money, and historically, it's been voted upon at the community foundation that they would pay fifty percent of these annual expenses for, for ambulance service. They haven't done that, and their, their claim is that they, it doesn't generate enough income to, to pay for that app, which puts us on the paper.
So they're maintaining the principal?
Yeah.
Well, now, originally it was set up, when the old hospital was sold, for years, that actually bought ambulances when we funded the EMS. I believe the fund has, I think it was a million dollars, and I think they have given out over a million dollars worth of funds. I believe part of this money, maybe why they're a little short, I think they bought new special cots for the EMSs, or, or we helped do that, so that they, they could go into the EMSs better, they fit better, things like that. So I think part of that money was used for the core equipment, so, yeah, a little short now, I don't know if that'll continue in the future, I think we'll still get money from them, because they're still, the original seed money is still there.
I'll make a motion, is that what, going to do them one at a time, or? Yeah, let's do them one at a time. I have a motion to fund forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars out of County General for EMS.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, pose same sign. Did we have an extension, or just?
Just one quick enough on voting yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. There's another County General Fund for perf and retirement, for thirty-seven thousand dollars.
We found a different motion for that, so we don't need that one.
Okay, that's eliminated.
CEDA. Yeah, so we've talked about this throughout the year, it's not new news to you, but when commissioners did their CEDA request for the seventy-five percent for twenty-twenty-two, we requested the, we requested, I think, nine eighty-eight, nine hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-three and sixty-six cents, or I'm sorry, that's total. So we've requested the seventy-five percent, but what, what would be, we request, so we requested nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, but there was a page left off, or, and Jana did something where the total amount wasn't included, and she basically counsel allocated seven twenty-seven, which is not seventy-five percent of CEDA. And we, and we have to spend seventy-five percent to keep the same rate on CEDA, so we've talked about this throughout the year. And our spend this year is nine hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-three and sixty-six cents. And we've talked about the projects that we've done throughout the year as well, like, there was a, like an emergency purchase of a highway vehicle, the Larwell Sewer, which some of you are familiar with, that commissioners approved, I believe, in two thousand nineteen, some of those bills have, have come in, I think that's completed now. The, the building project in front of County Highway, the drainage issues that were repaired and that sort of thing, was paid from CEDA. The jab systems and the courtrooms was paid from CEDA, and a corner vehicle, so those are all expenses that we've made. So we just, we're asking for an additional allocation from CEDA for two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, which puts us back to the seventy-five percent spend.
And you have plans for the full two?
This just makes it right versus what we said, so.
With what's already been spent. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the additional CEDA appropriation to? Motion and a second, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, and let it show that it passed unanimous. And let it show that it passed unanimously. Community corrections.
Oh, we're going to direct your corrections. I reached out to all of you via email earlier in the year just to let you know I was going to wait till the last meeting in the year to do this additional preparation because I knew we're going to have some expenses through commissary that we've not planned on at the beginning of the year. We ended up purchasing bunks, mattresses, a couple heating and cooling units to prepare for audit, which went very, very well. This has the 50,000 has been provided by department corrections. So it's not counting down.
Any questions for Paula? Second motion to approve in a second. All in favor of this additional appropriation request for community corrections, raise your right hand. And let it show that it did pass unanimously.
Thank you. Tim, thank you for serving on our board. Thank you for being here years of servicing council. Very much appreciate you.
Thank you.
I appreciate all of you, but talk to me here next year.
And I believe those are all the additional appropriations. No? Okay. All right, so highway department. Katie.
Good morning. Katie Frye, highway department director. I have a transfer request for you this morning. We had talked earlier in the year when I had requested for permission from the commissioners to have our small structures inspected for you or have USI rather complete that inspection for them. Their field work is going to be complete, I believe, this week. So we're going to have to report to them the next couple of weeks. So this is the invoice that we can pay a portion of it out of the 2022 budget year. So I am actually requesting to move the $44,000, which is going to be the total of the invoice in its entirety to move from calcium chloride, which is a line item for gravel road conversions, which we did not complete this year due to expense increases. And then move that to contracted services. And then I do have an encumbrance request that I believe is in January for the remaining amount to move that into the 2023 budget year to pay for the remaining of the invoice.
Do I have a motion to approve the transfer for highway department?
Make a motion.
Second. Further discussion or questions?
What's total on that invoice, Katie?
The total is 44,000.
Are you stopping the spraying of gravel roads?
I'm sorry.
Are you going to stop spraying county roads, the gravel ones?
This particular line item for the calcium chloride was just for gravel road conversions. For the budget for next year, we're reevaluating the calcium chloride application for dust control. But this particular line item itself was for calcium chloride that sprayed on the road surface before it's turned into a chip and seal service.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. And let it show that it was unanimous. While you're here, Katie, the reconstruction, if you will, of the office area, is that completed?
The, the front of the building?
Yes.
We actually just had our spray insulation person come yesterday. It's mom for insulation and get the final kind of layout of everything. And they are slated to start next week, I believe. So they have all of the material and everything that we needed. We were just scheduled for the contractor to begin. Is it the second week of December? So they're, they're ready to go. We're just waiting on their availability for the time that they gave us.
Anything else that you'd like to report from the highway department? Okay, thank you very much. Do not see. Yes, Nathan is right there. Do you want to speak to this appointment again?
Good morning. Nathan Bilder, planning director. We have an opening coming up for the county board of zoning deals. The way the state statute works, most of the appointments are from commissioners. But the county council has given one appointment. Sarah Lopez is currently your regular member appointment. She is stepping down at the end of her term at the end of this year. When she was appointed, we actually had two people who put their name in at that time. Sarah and Kelly Shees, the council four years ago opted to appoint Kelly as the alternate. And she's been serving in that role for four years as the alternate to Sarah. She would be interested in serving again as a regular member if you wanted to appoint her as such. Other than that name, I haven't approved any other nominations to look into. I haven't gotten any other letters of interest before either recently for this position. So if you wish to appoint Kelly as the regular member, that's option one. Appointer, reappoint her as the alternate member, that'd be another option. Or not reappoint her at all would be another option leaving it open. What options two and three would leave that position open for someone else. Any questions?
How do you let people know there's a position?
We posted it on the website for the most part. Sometimes we have a pool, like when Sarah and Kelly came in, we had a pool of, I think at the time about four different people. And Sarah and Kelly were the only ones that actually wanted to put their name in for BCA. But at this point, the letters of interest that we've had are more than two years old for various planning mission, EBA, whatever. And so now we haven't gotten anything else that's been mentioned in public meetings.
Sarah, council member prepared to make a motion in relation to one of these three options.
I move we nominate Kelly Shees. She's been an alderman for four years. And that's why I moved if we put her in permanent on the BTA.
Second.
No, not permanent, but for this term.
For this term.
I have motion in a second. Any further discussion?
If she was good enough to be an alderman for four years, I think it's deserving to move her up to a member.
All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. And let it show it was unanimous.
Do you have an appointment form where you'd assign?
Then will you search for an alderman or you leave that open?
That's your call. It was a matter of convenience four years ago. We had two people. And none of the other physicians on the empty boards, although they all could. Usually the appointing boards, if they feel like they want to appoint one, they will. But it's not, not a requirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Schinaberry, personnel policy manual.
You should have a full copy of the entire manual as well as just kind of a cheat sheet, so speaking of 27 of the most pertinent changes that were made. So that you can refer to that.
That came by email.
It did go before the commissioners' last meeting and they just passed it with one amendment. And that was to page 73 under meal reimbursement. They recommended the delete fee line that says up to $25 per meal. So that it's just a maximum of $75 per day. That was the only amendment that they suggested.
So does that mean that if the person was just out of town for one meal, they would still have $75 to spend on that meal?
No, it does say that the county will reimburse the extra costs of the meal. So oh, you're saying so they could potentially.
So this is actual expense, not per diem?
Correct. It would still have to turn into an itemized receipt, but potentially yes.
But it's saying $75 per day. So if the person was traveling for an evening event, they could spend $75 on that one meal.
Weight and drink.
Yeah. But if I may, I, I offered that amendment. And the reason was I'd recently traveled and grabbed breakfast in the hotel and it was $23. And I was a little bit stunned that my breakfast was $23. And that's typically your cheaper meal of the day. Fortunately, at this conference lunch was provided and I didn't stay for dinner. But if we have employees who are traveling and we allow them the budget that to work within that $75 per day and meals aren't provided, then you know, that would allow for them to, you know, we put a cap on it, but it allows them if they exceed 25 at one meal. You know, but they were under 25 at another meal, kind of comes out as a wash. But as it seems right now, there is no cap. There's no limit. So we felt it best to put a cap on it.
And depending on where they're going, it'd be hard to determine. Some meals are very expensive. For areas.
Well, I would hope our employees are good enough not to take advantage of us like that. And I guess if it does happen, then we'll, then we'd have to win and make an amendment or whatever on that. I agree with Chad's $75 a day. Surely they they got enough respect for the county.
The way it is now, you and I can get six meals in a day.
Yeah. Funny.
I have a question on the manual. I think I missed it, but reading it on the phone, it's 75 page document. And I didn't see where it listed stepchildren or step parents are included. Does it say that?
It did. Right, so it's on, it's number 12.
Okay.
The changes. So we, it does address step siblings, step parents. And then we also added pregnancy laws to that as well. There were, there were some changes to the bereavement.
And what are you asking us to do today?
Well, our current policy manual states that anytime a amendment is made, it needs to be passed by both the board of commissioners and the county council. So I'm questioning that we vote to approve it. Effective, I'd like this to go into effect January 1st. So that that gives me time to make sure that all staff are aware of changes and I can get everything in order. Certainly, if you have any questions or want to make amendments yourselves, this is the time to do it.
Very thorough manual.
Do I have a motion to approve the personnel policy manual? As it is amended, including the amendment by the commissioners?
I'll make a motion.
Motion is made. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, or any further discussion? Any questions?
I want to thank the people who were interested in making this manual.
Hearing nothing more, all in favor of the motion for approval, raise your right hand. And let it show that it was unanimous.
I, I just want to say that this, this meal allowance certainly puts pressure on the department head or supervisor to monitor their employee expense on that. So I think that's a good way to say that, you know, be prudent with that.
Anything else regarding personnel?
No, just the next item on the personnel committee. And I just wanted to make note that we will need to appoint someone to replace you. So I think this is probably the kind of the.
I think it will be the appointments among the appointments made in January. There's a whole list of appointments we make. Thank you. Commissioners.
It's been quiet over the past couple of meetings. But not a lot to report, but I will just want to remind everyone that this Friday from 2:00 to 4:00 and, and meeting room may be downstairs is a retirement celebration for George Trump. We'd love to have maximum participation for that. Just a real quick comment on the jail bids are now coming in, the YGANDs. You know, it's not a, they're not, it's coming to the county, they're going to YGAND. And so we're getting really close to finding out how much we think this will cost. So I mean, that's going to come in like days, how much? And, and then they can generate their guaranteed maximum price. And then we go to the bank and say, here's what we're looking for. But just as a reminder, our funding sources right now, we're, we're still thinking that we can comfortably bond 25 million. We're still looking at a possible, possible contribution from the redevelopment commission for 4 million. An ARPA contribution from the commissioners for 3 million. And a CEDAT contribution from commissioners for a million. Plus, plus an annual commitment to the, to the bond for, for payments from CEDAT. And then, of course, the lit tax is still working and generating like one point, I believe, 1.5, maybe one and a half million a year. And it's anticipated that it would reach 7.2 million by the time the project is complete. So you know, you look, we still feel that the, the price for the jail is coming in somewhere around 35 to 38 million. We'll find out, of course, when YGAND opens their bids, but we'll keep you posted on that. And there's been some discussion about renewing the bond for the building that we're sitting in. This, this building is paid for October of next year. There's, there's a debate happening now about whether or not you renew the bond and maybe shift some of those bonds to the, the new capital project. And fortunately, we have time because the bond's not paid until October of next year. So we have time to work through that if, if we, if we determine that that's the right thing to do. And of course, council and the auditor would, would be involved in that decision-making process, too.
And to continue that bond, if it were the decision made, does not change the tax base?
That's right, yeah, it wouldn't change the rates.
Any questions for Commissioner Ranks?
Well, thank you for the update.
Sure.
We have two meeting minutes to approve. There was a November 9th regular meeting. You've had the opportunity to review the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 9 meeting? Motion and second. Any discussion, any adjustments, changes, or questions? Hearing none. If you approve, raise your right hand. And there are two abstentions. I abstained because I had to leave before the meeting was completed.
And I was six.
And then we have the meeting minutes from the November 21st special meeting in the matter of the Lincoln Highway engineer, engineering study. Do I have a motion to approve the November 21 special?
So move.
Motion, do I have a second? Motion and second. All in favor? All in favor of approving these meeting minutes, raise your right hand, and let it show that is six, yes, and one abstention. Public comment? Seeing no public comment. Councilman Barrett?
I have nothing.
Councilman, Councilperson Western?
I just want to say thank you for your time with the council and all you've done. You've been great to work with us. I appreciated everything you've done with Personnel Committee that I worked with you on. Thought you were awesome, and I wish you all the best in your new endeavor. And I just want to say also, have everyone have a Merry Christmas, and I'm looking forward to next year.
I have a question on the sheriff's contract. Where are we at on that?
It's in the Commissioners' hand. Would be voted on at their next commission. And will probably bring brought to us next council meeting.
And I'd also like to thank Tim for your, your work for the county. Well appreciated. Enjoy retirement. I know how it is, and, and thank you.
Mr. Moore? Nothing else. Mr. Hodges?
I'll say thank you, Tim. Appreciate, appreciate your help and your guidance and anything that you've helped me get to going in council, but personally, I agree with you.
Me, too. Want to say thank you, Tim. Enjoyed serving with you. Been great. So. Enjoy the rest of your life.
I want to thank the people of Whitley County for not voting me into the Commissioners. I have really enjoyed working with all of you, our elected officials, department heads, and the employees. Whitley County government is in good hands, and I look forward to the future. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.